Hello, my name is Jennifer D.K. And I'm the publisher of the Downey Patriot Newspaper. Welcome to the 2020 School Board Candidates Forum. In previous years, the Downey Patriot, in association with the Downey Chamber of Commerce, have presented the School Board Forums, streamed live and in person. We have made adjustments this year due to COVID-19 and are happy to present a virtual forum so voters still have the opportunity to hear from candidates. In Zoom, please use the chat feature to ask questions that will be provided to the moderator. We will be hearing from candidates by trustee area. Trustee Area 2 will kick off the event with their individual candidate statement, followed by trustee areas 3, 4, and 5. Then we'll break out into individual trustee areas for Q and A. At the end, after we hear from each trustee area, select questions that have been provided from the community will be asked and discussed. After the duration of the event, each candidate will provide a closing statement. At this time, I would like to introduce my co-host, Michael Calvert, Executive Director of the Downey Chamber of Commerce.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name's Michael Calvert. I'm the, I guess I can get rid of this. I'm the Executive Director of the Downey Chamber of Commerce and very excited about this evening. I think it's important because the Chamber has such a great relationship with the school district. So I want to thank you all for participating. Monitoring today's School Board Forum is Eric Pierce. Eric is the editor of the Downey Patriot and he's very involved in the Downey community, particularly within the Downey schools. He is the past Chair of the Downey Unified District Measure O Bond Oversight Committee. He's a board member with TLC, which is a family resource center providing food and social services to Downey students and their families. And he's also an advisor for the Keith Club at Warren High School. Eric will be asking tonight's questions and will do his best to ensure a fair, efficient, and worthwhile forum. Thank you for tuning in, and Eric will be up in just a minute. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the Downey School Board Candidates Forum. I want to thank all of the viewers who signed up to watch tonight's forum and also the candidates who agreed to participate. Under normal circumstances, this forum would be held in person, but these are not normal circumstances, so we do the best that we can. The purpose of tonight's forum is to learn about each of the candidates so that each of us can make better, more informed decisions this election. Tonight, we hope to learn about their vision for Downey schools and why they think they are the best choice for the Downey Board of Education. Before we get started, I'm going to explain the rules of tonight's event. Candidates' answers are limited to 90 seconds per question. Rebutts are limited to 30 seconds each. A timer will be displayed on the Zoom screen indicating the time remaining. The forum will be conducted according by trustee area. In other words, candidates can't interact with candidates in another trustee area. Forum organizers reserve the right to mute candidates who go past their allotted time or who engage in abusive or profane dialogue. The moderator has sole discretion as to which questions are asked, to whom, and in which order. Questions from the public will be solicited before and during the forum, and questions will be asked at the discretion of the moderator. So with that out of the way, we're going to get started with the candidate statements. We are going to hear from each of the candidates right now. One more thing to add is we do have two candidates tonight who are running unopposed, and so we're grateful for them to, that are here participating. We're probably going to spend less time with them only because we want to focus more time with the contested elections. But we are still going to hear from them. We're going to ask them some questions, so we don't forget about them. So we're going to start me now with trustee area 2, Kathy Godenas. And you have one minute. Kathy?
Hi, my name's Kathy Bayon-Godenas. Me and my two kids are proud products of the Downey Unified School District. For the past 18 years, I've been involved in my community through Assistance League, Vice President of Downey Youth Football, Builders Club through Kiwanis Club of Downey, Griffiths Middle School PTA, Vice President and the Coordinator for the Home Discount here in Downey. I'm proud of all our Downey students in keeping up with so many changes, so many, sorry, so many changes within our community with this remote learning. However, remote learning is not the solution. I believe it is possible to reopen our schools following CDC guidelines. Kids need to develop social skills, and these can't be taught via computer. As an elected member, I will prioritize students' health and faculty, students' health and safety, fiscal responsibility, and transparency. As an engineer, I understand the deal. I understand how to deal with complicated issues that we're facing here in the district. I am a candidate with a proven record to my community and the experience that I have to achieve these goals. So November 3rd, remember to vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Moving on to Angie Radamaker.
Hello, my name is Angelita Angie Radamaker, trustee area 2. My experience and knowledge is extensive in the Do U S, Do Not, Downey Unified School District. I have worked as a bilingual Title 1 aide at Rio Honda Elementary School, helping students learn to read, Career Center of Downey Adult School, Purchasing Department, and School Office Manager at Griffiths Middle School. I have been Vice President of the PTA Council, Rio Honda PTA President, and Warren ASB Board President. I have gone to Golden Elementary School and read to the students. I have assisted in the PTA Helps pantry and volunteered at the Downey Library, helping our community with reading. Also, I'm a Unit 1 Treasurer and Vice President, and right now I am Personnel Commissioner, and I hope to continue to be an asset to Downey Unified School District. And that's why I'm running for the School Board. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. And moving on to Jose Rodriguez.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jose Rodriguez, and I am running for trustee area 2. Thank you to the Downey Patriot, Chamber of Commerce. Appreciate the opportunity to share who I am and what my vision is for the School Board. I'm a longtime resident here in Downey. We moved here to Downey for the schools and the safe community. And I got three kids in the district right now. I have twin boys. They're ninth graders, just started at Downey High, and my daughter's eighth grader at Nody. So we're dealing with the distance learning challenges right now. My wife of 19 years, high school sweetheart, is also a fifth grade elementary teacher in a neighboring school district. So been involved for a long, long time here in the community, was a coach at DJA, AYSO, and past PTA President at Gallatin Elementary. Graduated from UCLA with a civil engineering degree and been with my company for 20 years. I'm a builder. When I'm not building buildings, I'm building relationships, and I think that's key to being on the School Board is building relationships with the stakeholders, the community, the parents, the students, all the community leaders. So really excited to be running for School Board, excited to get the endorsement of Todd Corin, who's the incumbent and retiring after 19 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Next up, we're moving on to trustee area number 3, Carlos Avalos. Carlos?
Good evening, Downey community. My name is Carlos Avalos, and I'm a candidate for the Downey Unified School Board Area 3. I'm running because as a product of Downey schools and a lifelong Downey resident, I understand the value of a great public education. As a father of two little girls and fully invested in this district, I believe every student deserves a great public education. As your board member, I promise to be the independent voice our students and parents deserve. I'll be transparent and ensure that every student has all the tools they need to be successful. I will fight to increase our college and career credit, career-ready numbers. Yes, we have a high graduation rate, but only 43% of those graduating are actually ready for the real world. I will fight to change this. I believe my career in education has prepared me for this role, and I'm ready to give back to my community. I will fight to, I will fight to represent our students' interests during this global pandemic and make sure that we reopen our schools safely without sacrificing our great education standards. As a member, I humbly ask for your vote. This is the change in leadership our students deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Moving on, next, Gigi Perez Saab. Gigi, can you unmute yourself?
There you go. Take two. Hello, everyone, and thank you for having me here this evening. A special thank you to our Downey Chamber of Commerce and our Downey Patriot for hosting this forum to keep our community well-informed. My name is Gigi Perez Saab, and it's been an honor serving as your School Board Member for trustee area 3. As a parent of three DUSD children and a longtime community member, I am deeply connected to our Downey Unified community, its kids, its parents, teachers, staff, and residents. I have, I'm a bilingual, involved community volunteer as a past President of Seroptimist International Assistance League, co-chairperson of the Downey YMCA, and many other organizations, including our School Site Council for Real San Gabriel and Carpenter Elementary, and the PTA boards as well. Now, more than ever, I believe an effective board must be informed by the experiences of the students it serves. This pandemic poses unprecedented challenges for all of us. We are all anxious and scared. DUSD exists for our kids. Immediate concern for our kids is keeping them engaged academically and nurtured emotionally. Our kids need us to come together to do the work necessary to bring them through the other side of this pandemic, thriving and excited about life and learning. I'm running on my record of ensuring what's best for all of our DUSD students. We've implemented modern technology, modernized our campuses, increased parent communication, balanced our budgets, enriched our career technical education programs, just to name a few. We are raising people that are resilient and strong thinkers to pursue college or careers that they're prepared to create solutions to any problems that they come about. So I'm asking you, our Downey residents, to educate, encourage, and empower our students by voting for me, re-electing me, Gigi Perez Saab, to serve our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. And the third candidate in trustee area 3, Ethan Rodriguez. Ethan?
Hi, everyone. I'm Ethan Rodriguez. I've been a student here in, I've been a student here in Downey since I was in 3rd grade. And I, when I was in high school, I tutored at 114th Elementary School over in Watts. And right now, the times are unprecedented, and we're living during pandemic and civil unrest. So the kids currently in Downey are experiencing things that they have to come to grips with, a new reality. And the landscape of Downey, which is going to be apparent in 10, 20 years, is right now, today. To be sure that what we're doing is safe and effective for kids, whether it looks like continuing at-home education and making sure that they get the resources that they need in order to succeed, not just pass on through, is going to be vital for what Downey's future is going to look like and how we can pull out of this stronger than ever before. I believe that no one, no student should be able to fall through the cracks simply because that they don't have access to, you know, the things that other students have. Vote for me November 3rd.
Ethan, thank you. Moving on to trustee area 4, Linda Saldana. Linda? Oh, take yourself off of me.
Okay. Thank you for having me, Eric, and the Downey Patriot, as well as the Chamber of Commerce. My name's Linda Solomon-Saldana. I am a parent of three students in Downey Unified, a 10th grader at Warren, an 8th grader at Griffiths, and a 3rd grader at Price. And I believe that a parent needs to sit at the table of the decision-making that is going on. We have 21,000 students, very diverse of a population, and I believe in giving every child the best education possible because it is their absolute right as a child, as a US citizen, to for one moment in their time deserve and get the best education possible. So in doing that, I hope to represent all of our families, all of our teachers, all of our community in making sure that kids get the best education, which they are, continue the powerful things that Downey Unified is doing, ensure that they get that extracurricular activity, the arts, the sports, the music, that is so important to everybody. I am Executive Director of the Downey Foundation, the nonprofit of Downey Unified, and I feel that it is also just an important moment for us in this time when things are changing. We're going digital. Education is changing like it never has over the last 100 years of its history in this country. So thank you for your support. Thank you for having me, and I plan on working hard in representing our families.
Thank you, Linda. And our final candidate for trustee area 5, D. Mark Morris. Mark?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the citizens of Downey, grateful to the Patriot and the Chamber for hosting this, and as normal, you say the best for last. So I'm grateful for the education I received in Downey. I graduated from the Downey High School. Married. I have seven children, four still living, and I'm married to the best 3rd grade teacher in the district, Pam Morris. I believe that in Downey, every student, no matter if they've lived here all their life or they just moved in here yesterday, deserves the best education possible. Our superintendent says we're better today than yesterday and better in the future than we are today. So going forward, we need to look into the future as what it's going to represent. I believe that education is forever changed. We were responsive to the pandemic. Our teachers were ready with distant learning, and we've hit the ground running. We have plans going forward to reopen the school as soon as we can based upon the health guidelines and safety concerns, making sure that all students are safe and ready to learn. The vision of our district is that every student will graduate with a 21st education that ensures they're college and career-ready, globally competitive, and citizens of strong character. Downey has always had an excellent educational program. That is one of the main reasons people move into our community, is for the educational system and to be safe and sound through our police and fire. Those are the two reasons, and I uphold those. We are responsive to the pandemic. We will ensure that your students, when they do come to school, will be safe and that they will learn. Our academic standards have not changed as a result of the pandemic. We are moving forward. I think Downey is one of the best educational programs because we have a cooperative understanding with our union partners. We work with our teachers, and our teachers work with us, and we always have the best interest of our students at heart. And so I hope that you look at the candidates and vote for those that will move us forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that. So now we're going to get to the questions. This is the fun part. Just as a reminder, each of the candidates has 90 seconds, up to 90 seconds, to answer a question. And we are going to be displaying a timer. We're going to be starting in trustee area 2. And the first question is, what grade would you give Downey Unified for its response to COVID-19? Would you have done anything differently? So we're starting in area 2, and let's start with Kathy. Kathy?
Hi. I'm sorry, can you repeat the question? My computer keeps going in and out.
Sure, absolutely. So the question is, what grade would you give Downey Unified for its response to COVID-19? And would you have done anything differently?
Thank you for that. Actually, I would give our district an A. I think that our school, our district, our counselors and our teachers responded very well. They did everything that was in the bestest tryst of the students, of the teachers. I know that once it happened, as a parent myself, I was able to stay in constant communication with my son's teachers, with my son's counselors. So I think everything was great. I think, unfortunately, like everything, the only little glitch that we had, which I'm sure happened nationwide, was the overload of Wi-Fi. And that's something that the district doesn't have control over. But overall, we were good.
Thank you, Kathy. Same question for, let's go to Angie Radamaker. I'll repeat the question. What grade would you give Downey Unified for its response to COVID-19? And would you have done anything differently?
Thank you, Eric. I would give us an A+. I was there. I remember on March 13th, we were told that on March 16th, there would be no schools. And we were already, we already had computers. And it wasn't our decision. It was the county and the state. We don't make the call. And already, we've already ordered 14,000 iPads with internet to help our students who are having problems. And we have 2,500 hotspots that have been ordered to help our students. And I really think we were ready for some reason. You know, I thank you, Downey Unified School District, because you just knew it was coming. And I mean, they already had different things in place. They had masks, and maybe not enough. But now we have enough masks. We have enough sanitizers. We have shields. We have, in our offices of our schools, we have the shields around so that when you're talking to someone in the office, you're not, you know, you have a mask on, but they're being protected and you're being protected. But I appreciate everything that Downey Unified School District has done, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Angie. Same question for Jose Rodriguez. What grade would you give Downey Unified for its response to COVID-19? And would you have done anything differently?
Okay. Well, I'd give them a really high rating, you know, an A. You know, just from the get-go, when the pandemic started, you know, they gave out laptops. You know, there was resources out there, very organized. As a parent, you know, we had a couple of computers, but we needed a third one. And so to stay in tune with what was going on, you know, that was super appreciative. I think that, you know, the teachers, the faculty, administrators did a really good job of trying to keep us informed. Dr. Garcia gave a few updates, so, you know, on the School Board. So I think it was very important. And if you listen in on the School Board meetings, I think you got a little bit more information there. We initially filled out a survey, and they asked would we return our kids back to campus? And, you know, I think after that survey, only thing I would say maybe do differently is really just share that survey with the general public, right, with the parents? Because I think a lot of people didn't really understand why we still can't go back to school. You know, especially, you know, with everybody saying, hey, I wanted to send, most of the people saying they wanted to send their kids back to school. So, you know, I think it's just a little bit of communication and filtering that down to a parent just like me. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. For the next question, we're actually going to start with Angie Radamaker. Angie, the question is, what is your position on having police officers on school campuses?
My position is, I think it's great. I think it gives our students some respect and some caring, and I think it kind of helps them not think that they can maybe get away with something as easy if you didn't have our officers there. I respect our officers immensely here in Downey Unified, so I really hope we never lose our officers on campus. And, but thank you very much that we are able to keep them on our campus.
Thank you, Angie. Same question. Let's go to Kathy. Kathy, what is your position on having police officers on school campuses?
This is not working with me. Sorry about that. Actually, I think it's an excellent idea. I believe that idea first came from "good" when it was needed back in the day. It just keeps improving. I feel that our students, along with our parents and our staff, feel safe with so much craziness out that there is right now, that we are fortunate to have them right there.
Thank you, Kathy. Jose, same question. What is your position on having police officers on school campuses?
Yeah, I believe that, you know, it provides a level of protection to our students. I feel like, you know, they feel safe. You know, I think one piece to the puzzle, though, is making sure that the students know why the police is on campus, you know, building relationships with the police. And I think it's important to just kind of maintain the consistency, if possible, with the police officers that go on site. You know, if there's just a few, you know, you're able to develop a good relationship with the students. So, you know, in general, it is a plus, and especially if there were to have some kind of tragic event, you know, they're on campus. So, you know, it makes me feel a lot more safe with my kids on a campus with the police officer if he's needed. And, you know, I will continue to support that. Gang's Out of Downey does a lot of great things for our school district, great partnership there. So, you know, that what they're able to fund with some of the carts and some of the supplies, I mean, I think it's, I think it's important. So I will continue to support that. You know, unless there's something else out there that, from the community, you know, that may, you know, may have a different opinion.
Thank you, Jose. And Jose, for the next question, we're going to start with you.
Okay.
The question is, this year, we have seen students call for the abolishment of Downey Unified, citing allegations of sexual harassment. How do you respond to that?
You know, I think, I think right now, I mean, I think kids want to be heard, and I think it's important to hear their side of the story. You know, I wouldn't want to abolish DUSD, I mean, frankly. And that's why I moved here for the school district, you know, instead of paying for a private school. You know, with the lower mortgage, I decided to move to this community where I was able to send my kids to public school. I'm a strong school advocate. So I think, I think it's just important to just to get their side of the story, hear them out, do some active listening, and really understand why they're hurting. And I think, once you understand their side of the story, you know, we can kind of try to be, you know, try to understand where they're coming from. And there's, you know, in my opinion, there's three sides to every story, your side, my side, and the truth. So, you know, I think it's, I think it's important. I mean, they, you know, we say it, right, our kids deserve the best. We want to, we want to grow confident, smart, well-rounded students here. And all they're doing right now is, is just voicing how they're feeling, especially after this pandemic being cooped up all day long. I mean, they're, 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 they want to be heard. They want to be heard. So, you know, as a School Board Member, you know, I wouldn't mind sitting down at the table with them and try to understand, you know, along with everybody else, the rest of the School Board, the administrators, superintendent. But I think, I think it's important to listen to them.
Thank you, Jose. Let's move on to Thank you, Jose. Let's move on to Kathy. Same question. This year, we have seen students call for the abolishment of Downey Unified, citing allegations of sexual harassment. How do you respond?
Our school district is one of the best school districts that there is. I don't believe in abolishing our district, which is why so many families live here, which is why I I stayed here after I finished school and had my kids go through here. I think, like, the students are frustrated. They need more than than just the parents to communicate. They need more than just being, doing FaceTime with with friends. They need that one-on-one communication that they used to have with counselors, to be able to sit down, school psychologists that understand the frustrations that they're going through right now. I think there's just so much on TV that that's what is causing them to react the way that they are reacting right now. But not that there is anything bad about our district at all.
Thank you, Kathy. Move on to Andrew Rademacher. Angie, this year, we have seen students call for the abolishment of Downey Unified, citing allegations of sexual harassment. How do you respond?
Yes, I did hear about that. And I feel that we need a partnership here. We need a strong partnership with our parents, our students, and our counselors, or psychiatrists, or teachers, that we need to unite, and we need to listen to our students, not taking it like, oh, you know, there's no problem. And I know that we do have a a human relations committee in Downey Unified, but I can't, I'm not sure if that is part of what we're doing right now, is that we're trying to gather all this information. And we want our our students to feel safe, and we want our parents to feel safe about sending their students to school. And I have never felt unsafe. And our boys graduated from Warren High School. And I I'm behind anything we can do to help our district be together and listen to everything and just sit down, let's do it, and let's not wait too long. Let's just get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Angie, for the next question, we're going to start with you. Do you support a curriculum that addresses social justice issues such as racism?
Okay, um, I heard about this, and as I've been out campaigning, I've heard from voters out there asking me about the social learning that's out there, and they knew nothing about it. So that's another thing. I wish when we did do something in our district, we would inform our parents, get them involved. Let them know what's happening, because when the students come home and they start talking about this book, and the book is called, I'm trying to remember what the book is called. But anyhow, it's called, it's about three little girls, and it's called, sorry, One Crazy Summer, and then there's another book that's called The Other Side. But anyhow, I just think, again, we need to get together. I need the, I want to see the district, the parents, whoever else we need to involve, so that parents aren't shocked when they hear about the books that they're reading to them. And so anyhow, we have a diversity here in Downey. It's about eighty-five percent Latinos. We have Asians. We have our blacks. You know what? Let's get together. Let's try and unite. That's all I'm saying. Let's unite and get all this resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Let's move on to Jose. Jose, do you support a curriculum that addresses social justice issues such as racism?
You know what? I I do. But I also think we need to get some input from, you know, all our major stakeholders. You know, all the major players, right, teachers, parents, the community members, the students. I I think it's important to get get some feedback so we can get some buy-in moving forward. And, you know, the racism, racism is real in this country. And again, I think there's there's a there's a huge movement right now of people to be able to express themselves. And again, that's that's, that's why we're we're Americans here, to be able to express ourselves in a in a positive, calm way. And I think it's just, again, hearing what the, you know, what what the concerns are out there in the community. You know, again, just just being out there as well, and just, you know, being connected with parents, being connected with students, you know, through my coaching and and talking to parents through PTA and the circles that that we have with with the with the parents that are very involved with their with their kids' education. You know, they they want to to have a curriculum that teaches proper things about racism and shows social justice. But I also think, you know, parents need to be involved in that decision-making, you know, along with the community and and teachers and administrators. So that would be, that would be my response.
Thank you, Jose. Kathy. Kathy, do you support a curriculum that addresses social justice issues such as racism?
I'm going to say that in our district has done an excellent job in addressing any issues that have been brought that we can avoid unfavorable situations. This community is diverse from every border, whether you go north, south, east, or west. We are highly diverse. I believe that we need to open our communication to parents so that parents know a bit more of what we are teaching. And I strongly believe that we're here to give the students the best education possible, regardless of ethnicity, religion, beliefs. That's what we're here for. And to create more awareness. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. For the next question, we'll start with Kathy. Kathy, Downey Unified has a ninety-six percent graduation rate, which is higher than the twelve school districts surrounding Downey, but there is always room for improvement. What would you do to further increase the graduation rate?
Of course, there's always room for improvement. I want to say that that what we provide our students right now, we can say that not every student is a four-year college student. Not every student learns at the same level. We need to, I don't want to say cater, but we need to be able to give more attention to those students that need a little bit more. There there are a lot of technical opportunities here within our programs that most of those students have, and and that's what is good for them, and that's what works for them. We should be empowering our counselors. We should be providing teachers everything that they need. And and we can continue to keep sustaining the high academic standards here. We're at ninety-six. We are not that far from being a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Angie Rademacher. Downey Unified has a ninety-six percent graduation rate, which is higher than the twelve school districts surrounding Downey, but there is always room for improvement. What would you do to further increase the graduation rate?
We have lost STEAM, and I don't know if any of our parents or any of us know about STEAM. And what that stands for is science, technology, English, arts, and math. And I hope to get that back, because that helps a lot of our students. And also, we have a low-income percentage of seventy-point-three percent of our students. We have a total of twenty-two thousand sixty-four students at our schools. And that's a, that's a big number. I would like to also see, keep our career, technical, and education kept, keep that going. But also, not every student is college-bound. And I would like to continue to support our children in trades. In time, we need plumbers. Also, we have pathways that if, we have a culinary. And they have taught our boys. One time at one of our board meetings, they came with their food truck and they served us prime rib, and it was delicious. I I mean, and they just looked so great. They were all these chefs, and they were cooking for us. I think that's fantastic. We have an auto shop. I think that's great. A lot of schools don't have some of these pathways, and that's something we do have. So if our child is into art, they can go to arts, media, and entertainment, and then they can hit animation, they can hit dance, they can go into film and video production. There's just-
For the sake of of moving along.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Jose, same question. Downey Unified has a ninety-six percent graduation rate, which is higher than the twelve school districts surrounding Downey, but there is always room for improvement. What would you do to further increase the graduation rate?
You know, we've, Downey Unified's always been, you know, ahead of the curve, and, you know, I want to keep it that way. You know, I think what we're doing with technology and making sure the students have the necessary resources to be successful, I think is a is a key step. Like I talked about earlier, I think it's really getting the buy-in of of everybody and the input, you know, of finding out what's going to keep them engaged and and want to come to school every single day. You know, we 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 produce very, very good students here in this district, you know, through the through the sports, through the arts. We're lucky to have DFEO. You know, they've really stepped up to provide a service that, you know, students and parents were looking for. And I think that's another great opportunity, like Angie said, to bring STEAM back in. A lot of parents really, really were bummed when when we lost STEAM. So, you know, to to continue this graduation rate, I think it's important to just really find out what interests students, you know, with the with the CTE programs, with the Avid programs. I mean, those are all great programs, you know, that we we have. I mean, my kids are in All-in-Avid, and it's really gearing them towards, you know, college. But also think there's other, there's other ways to 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 be successful after after high school without going to college. So, you know, I I, again, I think it's just getting getting the students to to find out what what interests them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Appreciate it. Kathy. Kathy, did I ask this question already? I'm losing track.
You did.
I did. Okay. So, next question, the next question is actually was submitted by a member of the public. The question is, what is your philosophy regarding bilingual instruction? Let's start with Angie Rademacher. Angie.
I think it's great. We have a program at Carpenter, and it's called Dual Immersion. Even one of our little students that lives across the street from us, he has a little sign that he's a scholar. The parents just love it. The daddy is Romanian, the mama is Mexican, and she said she just can't believe how fast their student is learning how to speak Spanish, because she wants him to learn Spanish. So I I think it's great. And I think at first, it was a little iffy. And I think once our students started going there to kindergarten and going on, parents, I mean, there's a big line. People are trying to get in there. So I appreciate that we have started this dual immersion. Thank you so much, Downey Unified and the school board, for doing this.
Thank you, Angie. Jose, same question. What is your philosophy regarding bilingual instruction?
You know what? I think it's important. You know, as as I'm out there talking to voters, they actually want to see more bilingual, you know, opportunities for their students. You know, we have one at Carpenter, but, you know, you know, just providing additional opportunities and resources for for all our kids to succeed. I know it's just starting out. But again, there's, you know, there's always room for improvement. You know, but but a lot of people are very interested in the Dual Immersion program, the benefits that it provides to learn two languages, right? I mean, most of every other country has is bilingual or trilingual. And, you know, like Angie said, is this this community is, you know, primarily Latino. So, you know, when you're not able to teach it at home, you know, there's a good opportunity for the district to provide that resources, again, to to engage the students, to provide the best for our twenty-two thousand students, and and to continue the the momentum that we have in this district. So it's a, it's it's a great opportunity.
Thank you, Jose. Kathy, what is your philosophy regarding bilingual instruction?
Goodness, that we have an elementary school that has Dual Immersion program. I think it's great. I think that we are teaching our students not only one, but two languages, and they can carry that out to better themselves as far as speaking two languages in their career. Most, like myself, in high school took a separate language, and then you have that opportunity to learn a third language. So look at now, not only do you know English, but you know Spanish, and you know a third language, which by all means is going to benefit you in the future, whether you go to college, or you go to a JC, or you do a trade program. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Our next question was also submitted from a member of the public. The question is, other districts in the area have seen an increase in charter schools and the problems associated with co-location. If you received an application for a charter school, how would you vote? What information would you need to make an informed decision? And have you ever earned income from charter school corporations? Let's start with Kathy.
Hi, thanks. Well, here, I think we are at capacity at every school level, so we are giving our students everything that we need. We have our classes filled, and there's no need for a charter school here in Downey. I know that they are outside at other areas within cities that are overcrowded, and they just, they can't sustain the capacity of the students, so they go to charter schools. That's the second alternative. But it's one classroom inside of a school facility or inside of a office building that really isn't, isn't a full-capacity school like what we offer here. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Jose, let me ask you the question. Other districts in the area have seen an increase in charter schools and the problem, problems associated with co-location. If you received an application for a charter school, how would you vote? What information would you need to make an informed decision? And have you ever earned income from charter school corporations?
So if I receive something, I would, well, you know, to to make the proper decision, I'd I'd want to know why the, why, you know, a charter school would want to come to this district. You know, I I think we need to understand what the benefits are to even, you know, again, make an informed decision. You know, only thing I could think of of why a charter school would want to come to Downey is is, you know, maybe they just weren't happy with with the curriculum. But we're doing everything we can here to make, again, keep kids engaged, doing the best for our students. I would vote no, me personally, for a charter school here, and I have not, I haven't received any income from a charter school. So that, that's what I would say on on charter schools.
Thank you, Jose. Angie, let me read the question again. Other districts in the area have seen an increase in charter schools and the problems associated with co-location. If you received an application for a charter school, how would you vote? What information would you need to make an informed decision? And have you ever earned income from charter school corporations?
I've never earned income from a charter school. And if I did receive a letter from them, my most important thing is curriculum. And I would have to really know what they're teaching, where they get their information from. And I would want to know, you know, we have laws. We have ed codes, so I I don't know if charter schools have all these. But so I would not be in favor. And again, my son's graduated, and they're doing fine. So I would say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. The next question was also submitted by a member of the public. The question is, the next question relates to non secular schools, which recently have been gaining favor from elected officials. This could result in the use of taxpayer funds to pay for some costs- This could result in the use of taxpayer funds to pay for some costs at non-secular schools. Have you ever had your student enrolled in a non-secular school? As a school board member, how will you advocate for use of public funds to stay in public schools and not be diverted to private schools? So let's go ahead and start with Angie. Angie, could you answer, please?
So, can you just repeat it one more time, please? I got some of it.
Sure. So how would you, how would you advocate to keep public funds within Downey Unified public schools and not be diverted to private schools?
Well, I would make sure that it's on the ballot, that, the people that want to go to a secular school or a charter school, you know, they can go. But I want to keep our funds in our school district. I don't want to distribute it because then it leaves us with less money in our schools to do what we need to do for our students. So, um, no, I don't want our funds to go outside of our district or our school.
Thank you, Angie. Let's go to Kathy. I'm going to paraphrase the, the question just for the sake of efficiency. Have you ever had your student enrolled in a non-secular private school? And as a school board member, how would you advocate for the use of public funds to stay in public schools and not be diverted to private schools?
Thank you. No, I have not. My kids both done schools here at Downey. I believe that we need to keep our money here in Downey. People choose to go to a private school, then that is their choice. Their, their funding at private schools comes from the tuition that they pay. Here in Downey, our money is that we get is for our students to give back to our students to continue to enrich the programs that we have here. So, no, I, as a board member, I would not send my kids to a private school.
Thank you, Kathy. And Jose, I'm going to paraphrase again. Have you ever had your student enrolled in a non-secular private school? And as a pri- as a school board member, how would you advocate for the use of public funds to stay in public schools and not be diverted to private schools?
So I have not sent my kids to private school. But I think, you know, to keep the funding here, you got to look at the, uh, you know, the local control funding formula and how our schools are, are funded. I mean, there's, there's a lot of science behind, you know, where we get our funding and, and where it needs to go to. So, you know, again, just, just a- as a parent, it's, it's advocating to other parents and the community and, and stakeholders, um, you know, how our funding is, is being proportioned. You know, I would advocate for more programs like CTE, like feminists, you know, like skills that, you know, we get, we get additional funding. There's grants out there and so forth that help fund these programs. So, you know, again, there's, there's opportunities out there. Just going to other school districts and understanding, you know, all the good things that, that other people, other school districts are doing. I know we went to, you know, Monrovia and we got an idea of wellness centers and we're implementing that here. So, you know, there's a lot of i- good ideas out there. And again, I, you know, for me, you know, just just trying to continue to be innovative and, and find those programs that keep our, our students engaged, I think is important. I mean, our students deserve the best, again, like, like, uh, like they've said, and, and I, I believe it. I, I totally believe it.
Jose, thank you. For the sake of time, I'm going to ask one more question for trustee area two, and then we'll move on to trustee area three. So the, the next question is, what separates you from the other candidates? And let's start with Jose. Jose, what separates you from the other candidates?
You know what? I think, um, there's a few things. I mean, I, my professional experience, um, working for a company for the last twenty years, you know, we built a lot of good relationships. And you, you, it's same thing here in this community here. It's, it's all the relationships that I have through coaching. You know, recently, uh, through, you know, being involved with groups, partly UCLA Alumni Southeast Group. And, you know, having, having a teacher as an educator, I have a lot of family and friends that are educators. So I know what, what, what's going on firsthand with, with distance learning. You know, I have three kids, you know, and they're all going through this, this distance learning, this time that, you know, nobody's ever experienced. So, you know, to get the feedback, um, the instant feedback from not only myself, but, but just the parents and community that I know in this area, I think is, is, is beneficial to make sure we're making the right decisions. You know, with this financial impact, with less money coming in, I, I think, you know, it's, it's important to make sure that we keep the cuts furthest from the classroom and, and keep our teachers and classified employees employed to, to make sure that our kids are doing, are getting the best education possible. And so, you know, I, I bring a lot of analytical management skills to help us and collaboration. And I believe that's why five of the, five of the school board members endorse me to be on board.
Thank you, Jose. Angie Rademacher, Angie, what separates you from the other candidates?
I believe that, um, the people that I have served on Downey Unified School District, Unit One, Unit Two, and the teachers know the heart that I have for our students, for our employees. And one of the things that I really believe in is that I want to be, if I'm elected, I will be the eyes, the ears, the voice and the heart of all of our students and their parents. And if you ever have a concern, you will call me and I will answer in English or Spanish. And I just want you to know that my heart is big. And, um, so, and I've served in many different fields. And I'm ready, I'm ready to go and fight for whatever we need to do to keep our campuses open, running. And whatever I need to do, I'm there. Thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Kathy, what separates you from the other candidates?
I'm homegrown. I was born, raised here in Downey, graduated from Warren High School. My kids are both Downey school products. You know, I've been here volunteering for eighteen years. Not only while my kids were playing football, basketball, baseball, but even beyond that. My son's in high school and I still coach. I still coach Razorbacks. I coach for football cheerleading. So I have, I have given my time here in the community and I continue to do so as through different programs, Assistance League, Assist Teens, helping and guiding our assist teens, our high school students, learning philanthropic programs, giving back to the community, not only to our youth, but also a- as adults. When I took charge of the homeless count, it was because I was passionate and I am passionate about everything that I do. I was born here, I was raised here and my background, I've been working here for twenty years at my company. I'm electrical engineer. I have all the technology, resources that I need to be able to continue moving our city forward, moving our programs forward, getting our students back to some normal and going back to school. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Now Kathy, Jose, Andrew, don't go anywhere because we're still going to have more questions later on and the closing statements. So, uh, so don't go anywhere. For now, we're going to move on over to trustee area three. And we're going to start with Carlos. Carlos, uh, this year, we have seen students call for the abolishment of Downey Unified, citing allegations of sexual harassment. How do you respond?
Well, I, I am against it, but I do believe that we do need to build that, that partnership with our parents and our students. I know that Human Relations Committee was developed and I believe that as a district, we should do more to engage with our parents and our, and those students, reach out to them, listen to them. They do want a voice. And I think that's very important. You know, they, they felt that disconnect. I mean, as, as a product of Downey schools, I went through, you know, our public school system. That I, I personally did not receive any of those attacks or discriminations against me. But I do have friends that did feel discriminated against. So it has been a long, I would say, kind of tradition within the district. So I, I do feel for those students and as a board member, I would reach out to them and our superintendent and make sure that we are listening and opening up to our parents and build that relationship with, you know, our staff, students and, and the parents and that community to make sure that everyone does have a voice within the district.
Thank you, Carlos. Gigi, this year, we have seen students call for the abolishment of Downey Unified, citing allegations of sexual harassment. How do you respond?
First of all, number one, my number one priority is safety for all of our students. Abolishment does not seem reasonable. I could tell you as a parent of three Downey Unified students and as a school board member and as a resident, any allegation of sexual harassment is taken seriously and thoroughly investigated. I feel we need to hear the voice of everybody that has shared it. As a board member, I have made sure that every DUSD employee receives training on this issue. As mandated reporters, we all have a duty to protect our children. Our district met with this former abolishment group to listen to their concerns and we looked into every issue they brought up. And we are continuing to look into it and handle it and prevent these circumstances from happening in the future. As a board member, my number one absolute duty is to protect the safety and welfare of every child in our school district. And every student must feel safe when going to school to focus on their learning. Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Ethan Rodriguez, Ethan, this year, we have seen students call for the abolishment of Downey Unified, citing allegations of sexual harassment. How do you respond?
So abolishment is a pretty extreme sentiment to express, but it is one that is expressed in a reaction to some pretty serious circumstances. It wasn't too long ago that those allegations came out against that, that teacher. And, um, what it is, is an expression of frustration with the system that has continued to allow these kinds of teachers to, uh, you know, penetrate our school system. And I think that, uh, what first and foremost, what first and foremost needs to occur is that we take a very strong look at what it is that we're doing as far as employment goes and, um, you know, take extreme preventative, preventative action. Because if no change is occurring, then the next time, God forbid, um, that it happens, those, those sentiments are going to come back tenfold. And then we will have to answer for what we have not done to help out the victims.
Ethan, thank you. Ethan, the next question, we'll start with you. Do you support a curriculum that addresses social justice issues such as racism?
Yes, I support a curriculum that addresses social justice issues such as racism and beyond that. You know, any manner of social justice issues as well, racism, discrimination, intolerance, they all begin in an environment of ignorance. And I believe that setting our kids up with a strong foundation of what it means to be un-American and what it means to be proud is a vital step towards getting toward, uh, a situation where we don't have to think about these kinds of things, but we have to start addressing them. We have to acknowledge that they do exist and we have to start teaching it to our kids. So that way we can get to a point in the future where it's not as big of a problem, right? If we continue to leave our kids in the dark about these things, um, what, what can we expect of the future, right? Rather than leave, uh, their education of social justice issues up in the air, I think it's best to lend some sort of aid, some sort of hand. So that way, we are teaching our kids what we, you know, as, as a community believe in. Ethan. Use of tolerance and acceptance for all races.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Was I muted or?
No, no, there was a little hiccup, I think. There was a little delay. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Okay, um, no, yeah, I was just talking about how we really needed to set our kids up with a strong foundation for, uh, you know, the future in terms of, uh, teaching them values of tolerance, recognizing discrimination and, um, you know, just being well-adjusted individuals that are accepting of all people regardless of, uh, you know, surface level traits.
Thank you, Ethan. We'll move on to Carlos. Carlos, do you support a curriculum that addresses social justice issues such as racism?
I do. And being with the, you know, recent allegations against the school district and certain staff, I believe that we should prepare our students for a diverse world and being a diverse community. Although I knew, I know our, our curriculum is approved by the state and that's kind of how it comes down, down to the public school districts. We do need to get some input from our stakeholders and make sure that everyone does feel that, that they have that voice. And we need to advocate for them. And that's the reason we are, we are put in these seats so that we could, you know, talk to the, the stakeholders up at, at the state level and make sure that we do get a curriculum that is inclusive of all of these issues and not just, you know, biased a, a certain way.
Thank you, Carlos. Gigi, Gigi, do you support a curriculum that addresses social justice issues such as racism?
This is something that I think is, making sure I'm, I'm unmuted. This is something that I think is very important, especially in today's world with everything that's going on. I'm very proud of my record as a school board member in addressing the social justice inequality issues in the past two years. For example, I played a key role in establishing the Human Relations Council Committee that is consists of the administration, staff, students. And the future will incorporate more community involvement. The Human Relations Council has been meeting regularly over the past few months to address these concerns and to develop best practices to respond to the needs of all of our students and to ensure that every student not only receives fair and equitable treatment, but that they also feel they are part of the process. The curriculum should be age appropriate and include learning outcomes. I feel there should be a larger coalition, including our parent input, and that is critical. And then we should be working together with our teachers and our district. I have established many relationships in our community with our teachers and with our parents. And I've received many calls from this because I, they feel I'm approachable to make sure that their voices are being heard. The parents should be informed of what type of information will be shared with the youth. I strongly believe this. And I believe that we need to provide a strong foundation to allow all of our kids to grow, being respectful of one another and to be able to have a dream. Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. For the next question, we'll start with you, Gigi. What is your position on having police officers on school campuses?
Um, I believe it's important to have police on campuses mainly for, to ensure security and safety for our students. Again, I want our students to focus on going to school to learn and not have to worry about any extracurricular incidences that, that may happen. I know, uh, our Downey Unified Police, we have a strong relationship with them. And also if we do decide to do our own Downey security, I think it's very important that, again, that we ensure that there's safety on campus for all of our students to be proactive and not reactive, oh, we should have, could have done everything. Our good program has been a valuable asset to our community and to our schools. Several of our community organizations have provided us with additional resources, including golf courses to make sure that we're able to get around, that the security is able to get around and to be there to protect all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Ethan, Ethan, what is your position on having police officers on school campuses?
So as I understand it, uh, Downey and its police force have a very good relationship and the people do trust the police in this city. But we also have to be very realistic here and acknowledge the fact that a, a growing majority of young people are taking on progressive ideals that are on the police force in its entirety across the nation with some degree of scrutiny. So there has to be a conversation between the students and whoever, like, and, and the actions being taken. Because how do we know that the kids won't be distracted or feel unsafe? Or what kind of, uh, you know, what, what's their reaction to us doing this all of a sudden, right? I do believe in prioritizing a parent's peace of mind. And if they can, if they know that their children are safe, then that's fantastic. If it doesn't detriment, uh, the police force at all, that's also fantastic. If it doesn't take away from the students in any way monetarily, that's the biggest priority. But, uh, second to that would be, how do the children react to that kind of action? How, how, what do they perceive it as? You know, what, what's the attitude towards them?
Ethan, thank you. Carlos, Carlos, do you support? Having police officers on school campuses? I'm sorry, let me rephrase it. What is your position on having police officers on school campuses?
Well, I know the city and well, the police department and the school district have a longstanding relationship. I mean, they were. On campus when I was in school, in high school. So I, I do understand that and I also understand our current climate as a, as a nation and. How our youth is seeing the police, although the community does trust the police department, we need to make sure. We are getting that input from everyone in the community and making sure that those resources are not taken away from the. Classroom and support from our students. I know we lost several programs, one of them, big ones, STEAM. So how, how was that eliminated? And, you know, we still kept police on campus. Although I know there is resources that are being paid for other materials such as like those golf carts that they, that they talk about that were brought in last year. You know, what, what resources are we identifying and applying directly to the students in support of, of all students and. And although safety is a big issue for school districts, staff and students, I want to make sure that they. Are also being supported in the classroom.
Thank you, Carlos. For the next question, we'll start with, let's start with Ethan. Ethan, what grade would you give Downey Unified for its response to COVID-19? And would you have done anything differently?
So the grade I would give is an A minus. I think that we've done a pretty good job at providing what we need to our students. Although there's room for improvement for sure, but the, the main reason I would give an A minus is because after having spoken with a, a number of children who are still. You know, students at Downey Unified and are taking online classes, one of the very candid responses that they've given to me, they're somewhat frustrated with the. You know, lack of adequate student teacher interaction. And so moving forward, I think that online infrastructure. Which is another big thing that needs to be addressed, needs to be updated and improved in, in order to not only meet the needs of the students, but. In order to empower teachers to more effectively teach their kids. Even if that means it's a little bit more clunky and like hard of understanding for the teachers themselves. We already know that the students are very well adapted to an online environment. Some teachers unfortunately are not. We do need to help the teachers in that respect and getting there so that way they can teach their kids more effectively for those who are ready. And willing to learn, but are being held back by, you know, some shaky online interaction and infrastructure as far as like. Teachers like, you know, responding to students immediately and effectively.
Ethan, thank you. Gigi. What grade would you give Downey Unified for its response to COVID-19? And would you have done anything differently?
Thank you. I would give it, give Downey Unified a strong A. Cause there's always a little bit of room for improvement, but again, this was a pandemic. Nobody has ever encountered this kind of situation before. I'm extremely proud of our district, proud of our teachers, proud of our students, proud of our administrators, but above all, proud of our students. Including my three little ones that have all experienced the daily frustrations with this pandemic. I have been working strong with our return to school committee since April, trying to make sure that when we do return to school. That we are prepared. The return to school committee consists of our administrators, principals, psychologists, maintenance, transportation. Just a little bit of everything, special education. And we want to make sure that when we do return to school. We are prepared with the proper equipment and the proper personal protection for all of our staff and students. I think I'm very proud of collaborating well with our teachers because in a span of just a few days, our teachers prepared packets, prepared. We just thought it was going to be two weeks that the students would go home with. And in reality, it turned out to be several months and now we started back to school stronger than ever, better than all the surrounding districts, better than many, many of our states. Across this nation. So again, I give our district a strong A. Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Carlos. What grade would you give Downey Unified for its response to COVID-19? And would you have done anything differently?
I would give the, the district a B plus. Being a parent of a child here in the district. I think it is an unprecedented, unprecedented times. The global pandemic hit everyone. Kind of by storm. I mean, I, I worked for a public school district, so I, I lived through it at work and at home with my, my little one. Yes, the district did react just like many other districts. In March 13, everybody was sent home. But I believe they were a little bit slow in response with the instructional package for the students, especially. The younger ones, you know, the ones that are still learning pigmanship, learning how to write. I remember having to ask the, the teacher, I even reached out to the principal about, hey, when are you guys going to give packets about for our students? So that, you know, my daughter was in kinder and we, we weren't receiving that, that response. They said, oh, this is what the district is providing, everything is online. And then school started and it wasn't until two weeks later that they provided the adequate. Packets for homework. So, you know, two schools went by and they were doing just online clicking with no actual instruction. So I, I do believe we need to provide more support to our. Instructional staff, our classified staff, and definitely all of our students, especially, special needs students that, you know, do require that extra attention and care.
Thank you, Carlos. The next question was submitted by a member of the audience, or I'm sorry, a member of the public. The question is, do you currently have any children attending Downey Unified Schools? If so, what grades and at what schools? Let's start with Gigi.
Thank you for that question. Yes, I currently have three children attending our Downey Unified Schools. And I've been a very active member throughout the years in our PTA and school site councils. One, my oldest is a new sixth grader at Dody Middle School. My daughter is in first grade at Carpenter Elementary and my youngest is in TK at Carpenter Elementary as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Same question for Carlos. Carlos, do you currently have any children attending Downey Unified Schools? If so, what grades and at what schools?
Yes, I currently have a first grader attending Rio San Gabriel Elementary and also have a fourth, four-year-old that will eventually be attending Rio San Gabriel and. Many nieces and nephews that attend Warren, Downey, Sussman, Alameda, Price, Galvin, many, many schools throughout the district. So that's why I'm, I'm invested here.
Thank you, Carlos. Ethan, Ethan, do you currently have any children attending Downey Unified Schools? If so, what grades and at what schools?
So, no, I do not have any children attending Downey Unified Schools, but I did graduate from Rio San Gabriel. I also went to Galvin Elementary School. And I did also go to Dody Middle School when it was still called East Middle School. And I have nothing but great things to say about Downey Unified School District. I think it's a lovely, lovely place and a lovely system and. I, I truly wholeheartedly believe in its potential to become that much better.
Thank you, Ethan. The next question, Downey Unified has a 96% graduation rate. Which is higher than the 12th school district surrounding Downey, but there's always room for improvement. What would you do to further increase the graduation rate? Let's start with Carlos.
Well, again, I would divert our dollars and make sure that, that we are supporting our students directly in the classroom and providing those resources to make them successful. As I mentioned before, I know our graduation rate is high, but unfortunately only 43% of those graduating are actually ready for the real world. Whether it be for college or a career in the technical or a labor field. So I would, you know, focus on that number and. You know, there's always room for improvement. It, it is a great, great number, something to obviously be proud of. But I would definitely focus on, you know, resources directly impacting our students in the classroom.
Thank you, Carlos. Ethan, Downey Unified has a 96% graduation rate. What would you do to further increase the graduation rate?
So first and foremost, well firstly, I think we should pat ourselves on the back and make it known, our graduation rate. So that way we set like a public standard for what it means to be a student at Downey Unified School District. But onto addressing the 96%. The other 4%, in my opinion, is a very workable number. And so what that means is that we need to work with these children. Who need to be identified from, you know, well before graduation. That if we can identify certain danger markers such as an increased number of absences. Very low income or, you know, some behavioral issues, we need to reach out and we need to ask ourselves like, what can we do for them? So that way that 96% slowly creeps its way up to 98 and then 99.99 and, you know, so on and so forth. You know, 4% very workable number and I think that it's, we, we can definitely reach out and help out those students in need because neglect is not the answer. Instead it's like help, right? Just reach your hand out.
Ethan, thank you. Gigi, Downey Unified has a 96% graduation rate. What would you do to further increase the graduation rate?
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of our Downey students for achieving this outstanding rate, especially when we compare to the statewide, statewide rate. Of 88.1% and the rest of LA County, including some of our smaller districts that include 86.1%. Yeah, so we're definitely outstanding there, but again, we're constantly improving. We're improving our social emotional learning. We want to find out why those students aren't finishing, completing the graduation. Whether it be for special needs, foster, homeless, whatever, check out what their attendance. Try to help them fill those needs for all of our students. We engage our students tremendously with all the programs that we have. We have an outstanding athletic program. Arts performing visual art program. We have robotics, feminines, culinary programs. Mechanical art programs and. Animation. We have an outstanding CT courses again, so that if the students are interested, well, we'll find something for the students to be engaged in. Find out what their passions are to let them finish out their, their, their high school career there. And if they're not. Doing well in our traditional high school, we also have Columbus High School to help out each and every one of our students fulfill. Themselves to the best of their ability. Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. And Carlos. Carlos, Downey Unified has a 96% graduation rate. What would you do to further increase the graduation rate? Or did I already ask you that?
Yeah, I asked you that one already.
I apologize. Next question, this question was also submitted by a member of the public. What is your philosophy regarding bilingual instruction? Let's go with Carlos.
I strongly support it. Being, you know, such a diverse city and being in a diverse country, I think it's important to be bilingual in, in the world and, you know, to be. Ready to go out there and, you know, tackle those, those challenges instead of just learning that one language. I do feel that our district should have. Opted to open up that program to other, other school sites instead of one that had, you know, lower enrollment numbers. And I believe that is the reason they opened it up over at Carpenter. To try to increase those numbers. So I feel like we should provide those opportunities to more students and families. Throughout the district because I, you know, I'm talking to parents and voters out there. That's one thing that they would wish we would do is increase our dual bilingual. Program to other school sites, not just one, you know, further down south. Where, you know, some parents might not be able to transport their, their students and it makes it a little bit, it's not so feasible to take them, you know, especially, you know, when we moved here and in this area. We, it was strategic. We were, you know, walking distance to the, the middle school and to the elementary school site.
Thank you, Carlos. Let's go to Ethan. Ethan, what is your philosophy regarding bilingual instruction?
So my philosophy regarding bilingual instruction is. If you, you can cite any study which examines the grades and the performance of bilingual students anywhere across the globe. And you will see a market increase on average in grades, graduation rate. You know, just, we are basically doing a disservice to students if we don't encourage them to learn a second language, if you look at the numbers, right? And so with regards to that, it also makes it easier for them to learn a third language if they so choose and, you know, so on and so forth. Overall, the brain is like a use it or lose it organ. So if we want to get our kids to be that much more enriched. And, you know, perhaps even improve on that graduation rate, then we really do need to be insert like, it's support of these bilingual programs.
Thank you, Ethan. Gigi, Gigi, what is your philosophy regarding bilingual instruction?
I strongly believe in the bilingual instruction so much that I have my two youngest children involved. In the dual language program that we implemented last year at Carpenter Elementary. Our school district believes that all students should be globally competitive and citizens of strong character. And that's exactly what this program does. And we're also a candidate for the IB program, the International Background Program that. Will absolutely enhances education for students in addition to the dual language that they're receiving. Hopefully down the road, we'll add in more languages such as Mandarin, Korean, Italian, option, whatever our parents want, we'll try to build it for them. Also down the road, I hope that our dual language program will continue into our middle schools and high schools. And also I believe that you can't deny the enormous benefit that this is for our students. It's a skill that'll carry with them for the rest of their lives. It's not just cultural, but it gives them an economic benefit as well in today's world and especially here in California. I'm bilingual and it's been an enormous asset for me to have in my career and in my life. And I'm proud to say that I could carry that on for our students and for my children as well. Also, some kids are like, oh, a lot of parents like, how come you guys didn't start this before? How come you didn't start this before? So hopefully we'll be able to provide extracurricular activities after school. To provide foreign languages for our students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Final question before we, we move on to the other trustee areas. The question is, what separates you from the other candidates? And let's start with Ethan. Ethan, what separates you from the other candidates?
So first and foremost, I think what separates me from the other candidates is that I'm young. And I have a pulse on the needs and the wants and desires of the students here in Downey. But I'm not so naive that I don't know the current systems in place that keep Downey, the, the great city and school district that it is. So I think a certain reconciliation of those two things is vital for moving forward as we reach into territories and situations which Downey. Has never really seen before. So above all else, I'm extremely flexible, malleable and I'm tenacious and I got a fire in me.
Thank you, Ethan. Let's go to Carlos. Carlos, what separates you from the other candidates?
I believe what separates me is that I am homegrown. I am a product of Downey Public Schools. I'm a long time Downey resident. I grew up here in Downey. My daughter is just starting her education journey here through, through the district. And as I mentioned, I have nieces and nephews that have also. And are still within our, our public school system. So I believe that, and my career in education and being a public servant for over 15 years. Also separates me from the other candidates and has well prepared me for this role.
Thank you, Carlos. Gigi, the question is, what separates you from the other candidates?
Oh, well, besides being the current school board member representing our 22,000 students, I believe my professional. Experience and my leadership experience, my character, my vision for our students to be the best of their ability. I've established relationships with our parents, our teachers, our staff, administration, our students. I've conducted site visits to each and one of our campuses. Attended several parent principal chats even through Zoom during this pandemic. I'm the only one that is endorsed by the parents, by the teachers, by our teacher, Downey teachers, our classified employees. Our city council, our own Downey school board members. I have a vested interest because I have three kids. I have grown with the school district. I have established the dual language programs. We've expanded the CTE programs. I have worked hard in trying to implement a new social emotional learning curriculum here in our schools. I have worked tirelessly, worked endless hours. To provide what is best for our students, not just for my kids, but for all 22,000 of our students. Downey is, has the best school district because of people watching out there like you. Because you guys all say Downey is the best and I've been proud to be part of that for the last few years. Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. So now we're going to move on to area four and six. You know, since we only have two people and they're unopposed, I'm just going to bounce back. have two people and they're unopposed, I'm just going to bounce back and forth between Linda and Mark. And so let me start with Linda in area four. The question is, this year, we have seen students call for the abolishment of Downey Unified citing allegations of sexual harassment. How do you respond?
I'm so glad I finally got a question. Thank you. So abolishment of the district, no. We need our local learning, I think it's called LEA, Local Learning. We need our district. That's how our kids are going to get educated. Abolishment because they're speaking out their social justice, what they believe. And I'm so proud of them. So I'm going to start there. I'm so proud of these students finding their voice, finding the courage to come forward and to speak, because that is the number one most important thing that they can do. And speaking up, letting us know, letting the district know what we need to improve on. Because there's always people, there's always issues, there are always situations that need to be dealt with, that need to be remedied, that need to be taken care of and will not be tolerated. So I thank them for telling us. And I know that this school board has already made the commitment to move forward and to open the conversations and to get the input and to investigate. And that's what's the most important thing, is finding out what's happening and letting them speak their voices and improve. Because only through that will we learn and grow.
Thank you, Linda. Dear Mark Morris, same question. This year, we have seen students call for the abolishment of Downey Unified citing allegations of sexual harassment. How do you respond?
Well, my response is it's not going to happen. We, we have established as a result of various things coming forward, a human relations council to deal with people who have problems that they haven't been able to voice in other situations. However, it should be noted that we have already in place ways in which these allegations can be dealt with. We have a complaint process that everybody's aware of. We, we let them know at the beginning of the year what that complaint process is. We also have a student hotline. Any student can call this hotline. It's published in, in the schools. We also have the 1020 Club through Daryl Jackson that can deal with those students who have problems. We take every allegation seriously and it's investigated as soon and as promptly as we know about it. So to say to abolish the school district, it's just so much talk. But what we do try to do is get to the underlying problem. If there is a problem, we will deal with it as quickly as possible and as justly as possible.
Thank you. Linda, the question is, do you support a curriculum that addresses social justice issues such as racism?
I do. And I support the curriculum because through reading, it opens up worlds of understanding, of tolerance, of a world where we may not understand. I mean, if we're not able to read and to learn and to guide ourselves, just like, and it's not a curriculum, but it's a standard with our pillars of character, to learn respect, trustworthiness, loyalty, everything that we learn in our schools is so key and so important because a lot of our kids, think about it, 21,000, I think Gigi said it's actually 22,000 students, what are they learning at home? So we need to teach them for a better future. And what does that curriculum entail? If it entails hearing stories of other people's circumstances that are different ethnically or culturally or religious as us, I want my kids to read that. I want them to understand. I mean, we can't block everything. I mean, people didn't want Huckleberry Finn to be read. And look how much we learned from books and literature such as that. So it's key and it's important and I believe in it and I know it has to pass standards. So I am all for it in terms of learning, understanding and compassion.
Thank you. Dear Mark Morris, do you support a curriculum that addresses social justice issues such as racism?
Yes, I do. But I might point out that we already have it in place. In every one of our classes, they always have an element of character counts where the teacher focuses on one of the pillars, trustworthiness, fairness, caring, citizenship, respect and responsibility. So it's built in to our curriculum. But I do support that. I think it's imperative that we realize that we need to treat all people equally. Everybody's the same under the law. And in Downey Unified, we treat our students fairly and without regard to race. It's, they are our kids and they deserve the best, both from the curriculum, but also from our teachers and our school board.
Thank you. Linda, do you support having police officers on school campuses? Can you unmute yourself?
Sorry, did it again. Absolutely. We're in Downey. The police and the city and the schools have a wonderful relationship. But here's what's different about schools here in Downey versus a school somewhere in the inner city. And as a news producer, I saw it for myself when I would cover stories. Our kids are not entering with metal detectors. Our kids are not dealing with random searches. That is the criminalization of our students. We do not have that in Downey. The relationship and the importance of our kids feeling safe on campus is key. And let me tell you as a parent, I have not forgotten all of the school shootings that happened last year pre-COVID. And for me, knowing that there are police close nearby, ready to protect my high schooler or my middle schooler or any of my children is absolutely essential. I will not have unmanned teachers or teachers who need to be teaching history or, or, or dealing as coaches, all of a sudden becoming the security guards. It's not right. We need those professionals protecting our children on campus. And I think that the relationship with good gains out of Downey and with everybody else through the city and through our police department is a wonderful situation. And so I believe in Downey Unified, they stay put.
Thank you, Linda. Mark, same question. Do you support having police officers on school campuses?
Yes, I do. I think having police officers on our campus gives our students someone to recognize, to help in different situations. They're not there to thwart crime, although their present, presence there has a calming effect. They're there to support our students, make sure they're safe and able to learn. I'll tell you a story. When I was a middle school student, I liked to play basketball. One day I was walking down the street to go to Galton, ran across some older boys who wanted to accompany me. They were in high school. We were walking by this gentleman's house. He was outside mowing the lawn and he, he yelled over, he said, hey, where are you guys going? They told him and he said, who's the young guy with you? They said, that's Mark Morris. He said, Mark, get over here. You guys head on down the street. As I approached, he said, and I, I noticed it was Officer Stone. He said, what in the heck are you doing with that crowd? And I said, well, I want to play basketball. He said, you stick around with them. You're just going to get in trouble. Now you head on home and don't let me see you come down here with them again. And as I walked away, he yelled out, Mr. Morris. And I said, yes, sir. He said, remember, a man's judged by the company he keeps. That was one of the best advice I ever received and I, I got it from Officer Pete Stone, who later became the Downey Chief of Police. That's the important thing about having an officer on campus.
Mark, thank you so much. So we're going to move on, just in the interest of time, to some of the questions that we've got in during the, during tonight's forum. We don't have time to ask all the questions, so I'm just going to ask one or two. In the interest of time, I'm going to ask the candidates to limit their answers to 30 seconds or less. The sooner you can get to it, the better. We'll do a couple of these and then we'll get to our closing statements. The first question is going to be, what are your visions in providing mental health support to students? Would you support hiring personnel to meet the needs of students and parents? Let's start with Andrew Rademacher.
Yes, I think this is very important. At one of our board meetings, we had a student come up and talk. And she was having problems and she was seeking help. And I really think this is so important right now. Anytime I think it's important because we never know what someone might be thinking or what's happening in their home. And that's why we need to ask people, hey, how are you doing? And maybe they'll open up. But I think it's very, very important that we get help for our students.
Thank you, Andrew. Jose Rodriguez?
A hundred percent. I, I really believe that that's what our students need coming out of this pandemic. I'm witnessing it firsthand how, you know, our students are very, very resilient. But you know, there's, there's a lot of kids coping with things that we don't know about. So I fully support, you know, adding more personnel. I know we've already talked about it as a school district, adding wellness, health rooms, mental health rooms. But yes, getting more professionals to help our students a hundred percent.
Thank you, Jose. Kathy Godenas?
I fully support it. 100%. I even encourage the parents to come and talk to, to counselors, to teachers, should they know something is wrong with their sons, their child. I, for one, experienced when I had a loss in my family, it was a difficult time for my son. And the school counselor reached out and was able to help and counsel and give my son the counseling that he needed. So yeah, we need to, to find the money and find it in our budget to continue and to keep moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Carlos Avalos?
Absolutely. I think it's very important to provide that additional support to our students and hiring those psychologists and counselors and making that available and known to our students and, and parents that, you know, we are providing that support. So I believe we, we should look in, into our, our LCAP and LCFF and find the funding for, for this additional much needed support for all of our students at all grade levels, you know, even starting at the TK level all the way through high school and continuation school, not just, you know, not just provided, you're not more top heavy at the, at the high school level, but I believe at every single school in, within our district, we should be providing the adequate amount of professional support.
Thank, thank you, Carlos. Ethan Rodriguez?
Yes, absolutely. I think it's a very, it's a really important step in de-stigmatizing mental illness, especially as, as it pertains to children. We need to understand that mental illness does not equal mental weakness. These are strong children with the potential to become even stronger students. And in our journey of getting from a 96% graduation rate up to 100%, this needs to be, you know, really well thought out and consider, and, you know, we, we, it's something we need to do on that journey.
Thank you. Gigi Sob?
Absolutely. We already have many professionals at all of our campuses, counselors, school psychologists, nurses, the deans. We also have support clubs. We have girls' clubs. We have noble knights. We have boys' clubs. But we just need to do a better job of informing our students and our parents that that is available for everybody on campus. And we need to also provide the resources available for our teachers and our staff members and our parents, especially during this time of need during the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Dear Mark Morris?
Yes, I, I, I agree with what Gigi Sob said. We, we do have psychologists, counselors, others who are trained. We also have for the parents and for the families, we have True Lasting Connections that all schools can refer families to for additional counseling if they need it. So we do make provision for that, but yes, we do need to recognize that. And in this pandemic with the students, it's been my experience that these kinds of things are heightened with the family having different problems other than just distance learning with mom and dad and having employment and being able to make the rent and all those kinds of things. They build up and they transfer in to the young student. And I'm amazed. Okay.
Thank you so much. Linda Saldana?
Absolutely. We definitely need to have everybody in place to support our students. And what's beautiful about Downey Unified is the only district in the area that has that social service wing, which is True Lasting Connections or TLC. And your teachers can refer you, families can reach them out. But not only that, we also, I went to today, a parent academy that the district is providing for parents during this pandemic with a family social therapist, Grupo Crecer. So anything that we can get to the families can help.
Thank you, Linda. Another question from an audience member. In recent years, Downey Unified has been trying to address decreasing enrollment. What are some ways you propose that we address this problem? Let's start again with Andrew Rademacher, 30 seconds.
Right. I know it has decreased and where we, it had gone down to 21,000 and we're up to 22 and we're, we're doing everything we can to go to 23. So we are asking outside our district that they can come to our school. So I believe that's the way we can do it because we do have a good school and there are parents that are in other cities that do really want their kids here in our district. So if we could bring them in, we would meet our 23,000.
Thank you. Jose Rodriguez?
You know what? I think it starts with, with, with us, with, with the community, with parents, you know, advocating that, you know, telling other people how good the district we have. I got friends that live in South Gate on our, on our daughter's soccer team and we've advocated, we, you know, we've, they've been able to get in. So I, I think it's, it's just important to keep that. And the 22,000 to 23,000 seems to be the sweet spot for the students in our district to, to provide, to get the programs that we currently provide.
Thank you, Jose. Kathy Godenas?
Thank you. Promote our programs, promote our schools, promote everything that we have to offer here, which other districts around us don't have. We have the capability to do it through social media, to do it through connecting through teachers and counselors. But the most importantly is put what we have to offer here to other districts. And I guarantee you, the numbers will go up. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Avalos?
Well, I think it starts with the, the level of quality of the programs that we, we do offer. I know it does hurt us when we, we do eliminate programs and, you know, people do take notice. So it's, it's word of mouth. I know our district is well known throughout, throughout, you know, this area, this, this community. Now, a lot of parents or students do come from outside and I know our district would like to bring more students from the outside, but I think we, we should focus on the students primarily within our, our city first and make sure that we are providing all of the available resources to those students. You know, not just try to grow that number, but like I mentioned, you know, provide that quality education that we should be providing that our students deserve.
Sorry, I don't mean to cut you off. Thank you, Carlos. Ethan Rodriguez?
So it has been my experience that Downey has no shortage of things to be proud of in terms of its school district. So when addressing a declining enrollment rate, what we need to launch is some sort of inquisitive campaign, which asks parents, you know, would you enroll your child in Downey? If the answer is no, why? And then we take that why and we turn it into why they should, you know, enroll their kids here in Downey. We, we just have to take a look at what is, what's the issue? Like what, why are they not coming here?
Ethan, thank you. Gigi Pressob?
As a district, we have already been working very hard on our marketing efforts to reach all of those students that currently live in Downey, but that are going to other school districts or a private school. And I'm proud to say we have recruited a lot of those students back to our schools. That's why we remain consistent around the $22,000, $1,000, 22,000 student mark for our student population. We're promoting all of our outstanding programs. Also wanted, we're also working on our early education program to incorporate more students to grow within our Downey community. Thank you.
Dear Mark Morris? Do you Mark Morris?
Yeah, I need to correct something. We are not a declining enrollment school district. We've gained 200 new students during the pandemic. So we are doing things well. As Gigi mentioned, we're moving forward and through our marketing, we're advising people that they can come to Downey. One of the key things that people need to realize, we were one of the few districts in the whole area that continued to provide breakfast and lunch for all students, no matter where. And they came and we provided every week. Very few did that.
Thank you so much. Linda Saldana.
The only thing that we can do to help us maintain our numbers of students, which brings in our budget, because the state of California and the federal government ties every dollar to a student, is remain being the best, being the best in the area, being the best in our Southern California, not lose students to ABC Unified or La Mirada or to private schools. Basically, it's an open market. Bring those kids here. Why do they need to be here? Because we give them the best and that's what we're doing.
Thank you, Linda. We'll do one more, we'll do one more question. The children in special needs classes who are about to become adults are not being taught, are not being taught what is necessary to prepare them for the future. What would the candidates do differently to make this change? We'll go in reverse order to start with Linda Saldana.
I'm kind of confused by the question. Why are they not being taught or who says that? I just, I can't answer that question. I'm assuming they're getting the education that they should be getting. And if they're special needs, I mean, how much can they be taught? I'm sorry, I just need more expansion to answer that question properly.
Sure. Mark Morris.
Yes, I agree. We need a little more information. However, we're already providing special needs with educational. It's hard to do during the pandemic, but we still attempt to offer it. We also work with ARC on life skills. And so I believe we're doing that, but we would need more information to, as to what specific things they're talking about to go forward with that.
Thank you. Gigi Pressap.
Thank you. I think our special education programs are doing great. But again, there's a lot of expectations that's demanded by the state, so, but no funding to support that. Yes, there's always room for improvement. I think we should prepare them for real-world scenarios. For example, with the Downey Federal Credit Union, we partner with them for a body reality that gives them real-life scenarios and prepares them how to do it. Simple things as how to get up in the morning, different things that we work with ARC together with that helps prepare them for their daily routines in life. Thank you.
Thank you. Ethan Rodriguez.
So if the question is being asked, then that must mean there's someone who's in need or who's in need of answers, who is in need of some sort of help in regards to getting their children with special needs, the education that they know that they deserve. We can't go on assuming that if they're asking the question that, you know, that they're just getting what they need and that's that, right? As a, I know personally that parents go time and maintain an open link of communication with schools. So we, as a school system, need to maintain that open link of communication with those children and parents.
Thank you. Carlos Avalos.
I agree. I think we need a little bit more information on that question. But if someone's asking it, obviously they don't feel like they are being prepared or taught adequately. So I believe the district should be reaching out and informing the parents, especially the ones with students with special needs that need that extra care and attention and informing them of all of these programs that are available to them and for them to make sure that their students are succeeding within the district.
Thank you, Carlos. Kathy Godenas.
I'm going to say that we are going to need some more information for me to be able to answer that, what level of special needs. Because as a parent myself, my son is an IEP student and I have no complaints. He has gotten the education that he needs. He has been in constant communication as well as I have with teachers at every one of his single classes. So it's a hard question to answer, given that my son's in it and he's doing well and he's getting everything he needs.
Thank you. Jose Rodriguez.
There we go. We have one of the best special education programs in the area. A lot of people come here for that. I know a lot of teachers that provide a lot, but I think it starts a lot with a parent advocating for their own kids and, you know, meeting the needs of their individual needs based on, you know, their IEP or their own individual needs. So I've seen it firsthand. I've seen a parent put her special ed student in a normal class with the regular students and that's because she fought to get her kid in that class.
Thank you so much. Andrew Riedmacher.
Yes, working at Grippus Middle School, many times I was able to go into a special needs class and I always walked in and I always told the teachers and I always told the SIAs, BH, you girls are angels. Because I could never do what they have done and are doing, things that I would think a nurse should do, they are doing. So again, parents, if there's a problem, please come to the district, go to the principal and tell us what's going on.
Thank you so much. Thank you all for participating in tonight's forum. At this point, we're going to give each of you an opportunity to make a closing statement to one minute. And we're going to start in trustee area two with Kathy Godenas.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, everybody. I want to remind everybody, I'm running for Downey School Board because I want to ensure that our faculty and our students have all the necessary tools and facilities that they need. As a parent, like I said, of an IEP student, I know the extra help that those teachers need, that the counselors need. And I want to ensure that we have that, that we have set aside what they need so that our students can continue to succeed. Believe I'm proof that our district, as our district grows, our students come back civic-minded to give back to our community, to give back and volunteer, just as I have, as I've continued to do. So remember Kathy Beland Godenas. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to Jose Rodriguez.
Thanks, Eric. Appreciate the opportunity. You know, why Jose Rodriguez for trustee area two? You know, I love this community. I'm passionate about serving. I love this school district. You know, I'm vested, super passionate about just giving back. As the oldest of four, you know, always looked after, you know, you know, my brothers and sisters, smaller cousins. So, you know, going into this, which was new, you know, was super excited to get the endorsement of Mr. Todd Corn, who's served us for 19 years. You know, Mr. LaPlante, Mrs. Swenson, Mrs. Oden Tony and Mrs. San Perry. So, you know, super excited. We've got a lot of momentum. And, you know, even though we've all talked about all the great things the district is doing, you know, I think we don't stop there. You know, we continue to be innovative and bring new ideas to the table, be advocate for parents and students. And that's what I want to do. With your vote, I will fight for our most trusted assets, which are our kids. So thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Riedmacher.
Yes, I'm running for this Downey School Board because I'm passionate about working for the best interests of our students in Downey Unified School District. And I want to make sure that the education our students receive in our school district prepares them for their future as adults in the 21st century. I want to continue to be a part of that effect by being on the school board. And I also want to thank Mr. Eric Pierce, Patriot, Chamber of Commerce, and especially our teachers in Unit 1 and 2 for endorsing me and Mr. Mark Morris. Our title, Unit 1 covers a lot of people and it's our classified, our school aides, our certificated, our maintenance operations, our transportation. They're endorsing me and they're the ones that keep our students educated, safe, fed and in a clean environment. And also I don't want to forget our food service because they have really worked hard during this whole pandemic. Thank you. Vote for me.
Thank you. Trustee Area 3, Carlos Avalos.
Hi, Carlos Avalos for trustee area three. So I'm running for this seat because I am homegrown. Like I said, I grew up here in the city. I went to Downey Public Schools. My daughter goes to Real San Gabriel. I've, you know, I've dedicated my whole career to the public service. I currently hold a bachelor's degree in public administration. I'm a director of facilities, maintenance and operations for another public school district. You know, I've attended and been part of many school district committees from school safety, health and wellness, and so forth. I was also Classified School Employees Association chapter president for chapter 596. So I know school districts. So that's why I know that I am the best candidate for this seat and to represent our students, being a former student of Downey Unified. So again, I want to ask for your vote. It was November 3rd, Carlos Avalos for trustee area three. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Gigi Pressap.
Well, I want to thank everybody for their time, for joining us this evening. First of all, I want to thank the Downey Chamber of Commerce and the Downey Patriot for allowing us to share all of our views. I know we're all passionate about improving our education for all of our children in our community. I'm running for reelection for one reason and one reason alone, to ensure that our teachers and our students all receive the best education and have the best available resources available to them, that DUSD continues to be the best district in the area. My priority is to remain our students' safety and wellness and engagement. As a parent of three kids in DUSD, I have the direct ear of parents in our district. I have proven to represent the voice of our families, have improved parent communication, revamped our websites, improved our parent messaging and social media and calls, texts and emails and corporate parent academies this year. I've been the voice of our community as a school board member and being the only member with kids in our district, I think has been an added bonus. You heard tonight, our district is doing many things. Let's educate, encourage and empower students. Reelect me, Gigi Pressap. Thank you.
Thank you, Gigi. Ethan Rodriguez.
I'm Ethan Rodriguez and I'm running for trustee area three. I've lived in Downey practically my whole life and I freaking love this city. I, as a candidate, my philosophy is completely future-oriented. It is an unthinkable, it is not an unthinkable scenario to imagine a future where we recognize the kids who are growing up right now as part of that pandemic generation. And I want to make sure that when we get to that point, that the decisions being made in order to ensure their continued success and well-being and strength for continuing to be, to contribute to Downey as a city is correctly hinged upon the decision that we make today and during these unprecedented times. And I think I'm the best candidate for that.
Thank you, Ethan. Trustee Area 4, Linda Saldana.
Thank you, Eric. We've had a lot of amazing questions and answers in terms of our children, our education. And I'd just like to really put my emphasis on the fact that this is about our kids, these four, five, six, seven-year-olds, all the way up until they're 18, and how we can serve them and give them the best chance at a future. Some may have thought of college, some may have not. Some could get pushed. I'm always about pushing my kids a little bit more and I think we can push our district a little more, gain that extra 4% for 100% graduation rate, get all those A through G requirements in and really, really just continue to shine as a district, just like this city and this wonderful community that we live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Area 6, Do you Mark Morris?
Yes, thank you again for this opportunity. I'm grateful and I hold the responsibility that is mine to make sure that our district has the best school system that we can possibly offer our students because our children deserve the best. They are the best and they deserve the best. We have provided them with the best teachers and the best educational program around, bar none. We collaborate with our teachers and they collaborate with us to do what's best for our students. That's our number one goal and always has been, always will be. Safety first. Since the time Downey was founded as a city, the first two public buildings ever constructed was a church and a schoolhouse. And that's the way Downey rolls. We are the best in the area, bar none. And we'll continue to be that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So in closing, on behalf of the Downey Patriot and the Downey Chamber of Commerce, I would like to thank all of the candidates for their participation in tonight's forum. I also want to thank the community members that have submitted questions and watched tonight's event. This broadcast is going to be posted on Facebook and also YouTube. Lastly, don't forget to vote. Election Day is November 3rd. Thank you and good night.
Good night.
Night.
Good night. Thank you.
Good night.